Alright, let us invite the officials into the room first. We only have one item today, and that is the leachate incident in the northeast NT landfill. There is also the west new territory landfill, and also the southeast new territories landfill in Changquanou. In fact, we have issued a paper to members, paper CB117741213. And the administration will make a PowerPoint presentation, and a hard copy will be sent to members later. Or rather, in fact, you have already got a hard copy of the PowerPoints. We have the Secretary for the Environment, the Undersecretary for the Environment, Deputy Director of EPD, and also various representatives from the EBD, there are Ms. Wong, Dr. Lin Chan. They are all familiar faces. This is the first meeting of this panel in the new session. This is not a welcomed topic, but we want to discuss this matter frankly, so that the matter can be improved, the Bureau. Yes, Madam Chairman, if I may say a few words. Good afternoon. This is a good opportunity to exchange views on the operation design of the Nent landfill. In particular, the dealing, how to deal with leachate. And let's be realistic and pragmatic in discussing the matter. Invite Dr. Lin Chan to make a PowerPoint presentation. Dr. Chan, please. Thank you, Chairman. Now, the first slide. It's about the Nent landfill. This is the Nent landfill, N-E-N-T. Northeast NT landfill. There are two rivers. Now, this is the Kongyou Nala. The other below is the Pingyuan River. The catchment area of the Nent brings water to Kongyou River rather than Pingyuan River. Because of topography, water flows to Kongyou Channel rather than Pingyuan River. As for the breached leachate lagoon. This is the location. I explained the reason for this incident. In the landfill, there are two different drainage systems. The first drainage system deals with leachate. It is the leachate collection system or leachate management system. Now, we... Leachate. How does it come about? There is waste in the... There is water or liquid in the solid waste. And there is also decomposition leading of waste leading to the creation of leachate. And during rain, during the rain, rainwater infiltrate into the waste mass. You can see the direction of the flow of the leachate according to the green arrows. At the bottom of the landfill, there are pumps. And there is also a leachate management system or leachate treatment arrangement. And when leachate is treated, it is discharged into the sewer system of the government. And then the sewage will be treated as Shetwu Hui Sewer Treatment Works. So we provide preliminary or rather primary treatment for leachate on site. Now, the landfill is sealed off. At the side and at the bottom, there is a multi-layer impermeable base liner. If you may look at B1, NXB1. Apart from the polyethylene... High-density polyethylene liner, there is also the bentonite matting layer, which is also good to prevent any leakage. The problem is not with the liner. The impermeable liner. If there is any leakage, the leachate will flow to the bottom of the landfill and may go into the groundwater. We monitor the soil and groundwater situation closely. At the periphery of the landfill, we have groundwater monitoring stations or points. The blue dots are the groundwater monitoring stations. If you may look at NX2A. We have provided the data in the past five years. We've obtained samples in the past five years, and we found that the leachate or the groundwater is clean. If there is any leakage of the impermeable layer, in the impermeable layer, then groundwater will be contaminated. We took samples of the groundwater, and we pay special attention to ammonia nitrogen. Leachate contains a high level of ammonia nitrogen. We provide the information to give you a better understanding. The bottom and the side of the landfill are intact. There is no leakage from the bottom or side impermeable liners or layers. Now, in Hong Kong and also on work sites, there is the surface water management system or rainwater or rain or storm water system, if you may call it. This is similar to, this is also done in the landfill. Now, in the landfill, the... During rain, there is rainwater on the ground, therefore, we need to have the surface water management system, and there are also silting, the silting chamber. And the surface water or the storm water system brings water to the Kongyou River. The Nent landfill has a total size of about 60 hectares. Ninety percent of the landfill is covered by these plastic cloths. Plastic cloth, green plastic cloth, which is impermeable. Any place that doesn't need to be filled up will be covered with the plastic cloth. As for area for dumping refuse and also for roads, they will not be or they are not covered by the impermeable plastic covers. As a result, rainwater can go through these places. With heavier rain, there will be more leachate. Now, decomposition of waste together with rainwater will create more leachate. Therefore, there is an important facility, which is the temporary leachate lagoon. The temporary leachate lagoons are not hanging in the air, as you see from the slide. In fact, solid waste together with debris and then covered by high-density polyethylene. The temporary lagoon is formed, and this is to collect leachate. We don't want to overload our own leachate management system and also the public sewage treatment works. Therefore, there are temporary leachate lagoons. What the problem, the present problem, or rather, the problem in question was caused by the leakage of the temporary leachate lagoon rather than the impermeable layers of the landfill. Let me explain to you with this diagram. On the 27th of July, there was a heavy rain. A temporary leachate lagoon had a breach. In fact, the breach is close to the bottom, next to the bottom, near the bottom at the side. A large amount of leachate went into the waste body, the body of waste. But some also, some leachate was discharged on the groundwater in the surface water system, through the surface water system into Kongyou River. You can see there are two holes here.
So part of the leachate flowed into Kongyou Channel. So when members visited the place, this part was mended, and this photo was taken on the 1st of August. For the damaged area, you can see that it's close to the bottom, it's on one side, but it's close to the bottom. How big is it? It's about 0.3 times 0.3 meters. So we have put a tire here, and you can compare the tire with these holes. And this is the damaged area. As I said just now, parts of the leachate flowed from the service system into Kongyou Channel. These two photos were taken after the incident. As for the last one, it was taken on the 9th of September. You can see a difference here. Now, let us go back to this picture. On the 31st of August, the damaged temporary lagoon was repaired and it resumed operation. When members visited the site, we also explained to members. We are now using a double liner. Because for the bottom part, it was damaged, so now we have added one more polyethylene liner there, so as to ensure safety. Of course, there will be follow-up actions. Some are short-term measures, and these are now underway. For example, we hope that the current sewage system can increase its uptake of pretreated leachate. And also on the 30th of July, that's a few days after the incident, we also increased tankering of pretreated leachate direct to Shetwu Hui Sewer Treatment Works. Of course, this leachate had been pretreated. As for midterm measures, we also have a number of them. For example, now we are considering the installation of onsite treatment facility to treat wastewater generated from site activities. This is different from the system I mentioned just now. Other than leachate at landfills, we also have offices. And in future, after upgrading our vehicle washing facilities, we would have more wastewater. This is a difference from the leachate generated by waste. So we would build a wastewater treatment facility to treat such wastewater, and the standard will be so that such water can be discharged directly to Kongyou Channel. Of course, we will also enhance our overall leachate management. For example, can we estimate leachate generation? And can we minimize it? And also, we would have to look at the adequate storage capacity, etc. So by doing all this, we would know how many lagoons and tanks we need. We will review the whole system, and we would enhance our monitoring on site. And also, the government will also expedite the upgrading of the sewage network. Thank you, Chairman. Administration, do you want to add anything? No? Now, I'll open the floor to members. We have four members who have already raised their hands. Six now, seven. I'll read out their names. Chen Heken, Lo Weiqiao, Zhenan Do Cheng, Lan Kuang Hong, Chen Kala, Roni Tong. Hello, Mr. Chen Heken. Madam Chair. Well, for the incident of leachate from Nent landfill, I think the government was not doing a good job. One month after the incident, the government informed the public. The residents in that area faced a huge potential risk. I hope that in the future, for notifying the public about this kind of incident, the government should react faster so that the public can be informed ASAP. Madam Chair, now they are monitoring the groundwater. And they are monitoring the level of ammonia nitrogen in order to decide whether there is a leachate leakage. So Secretary, other than doing this, do you have other proactive or positive measures? So as to monitor the lagoons and see whether there is leakage. Now, you can only discover the leakage when the groundwater is contaminated. But can you be more proactive? Can you monitor the lagoons more proactively? And when I read the newspaper today, actually, it's also stated in the paper. Now, on the 1st of September, after the damage was repaired, well, on the 2nd of September, some sample water was extracted and was discovered that the contamination level exceeded the legal standards. Now, why is that happening? Is it that the leachate would need some time to reach the groundwater? Or, other than the problematic lagoon, there are also slight leakages in other lagoons? Now, if it's the first scenario, that is, now the leachate has entered or infiltrated into the soil, how long does it take for the leachate to reach the groundwater? And how long does it take for the groundwater to resume a safe level? And also, last, in the last term, we have been talking about the extension of landfills. Residents are very concerned about the safety and hygiene of landfills. Now, we are seeing this leakage problem. In the future, when you come back to logical trying to push your project forward or when you try to convince residents that the landfills have to be extended, how are you going to convince them the landfills are safe? Now, you are taking four water samples a year. Okay, can it be more frequent? For example, eight times a year? Or can you do it once a month or at least six weeks? So that the public can rest assured. Thank you, Mr. Chen. I would like to make a few points first. You've been talking about groundwater. And as my colleague said just now, over the past years, the groundwater has not been contaminated. Even this time around, the groundwater is not contaminated. This time, we are talking about surface water, and some leachate has flowed into the surface water, and the water has been drained into the Nala. On the 27th of July, this incident happened. And immediately, my colleagues informed the villagers living nearby. It's not about, it's not one month later, because there were a few farmers living in the vicinity. So immediately, our colleagues informed them. As to whether we could have informed more people, of course, we can review that. As for monitoring, I'm sure you are very concerned. That is, how can we have a sound mechanism or make the mechanism even better? My colleague will answer this question later. Now, on the 2nd of September, water sample was taken, and it seems that the pollution level was has exceeded the legal standards. So after 27th of July, some leachate remained on the soil surface, and then after the rainy season, parts of the leachate were drained into the Nala. So that's why there was this issue. Now, from the 2nd of September up to now, two weeks have passed. We have been monitoring the situation very closely. And we do not find any more leachate. Mr. Chair. Just now, we have talked about this incident. Well, the leachate leaked from the lagoon, and it stayed on the surface of the landfill. And when it's mixed with rainwater, it's drained into the Kongyou Channel. Now, when we took members to the site, we went to Kongyou Channel, and we actually saw that location. So our colleagues would be monitoring the situation at that place. They would look at the water and see if the water's color has changed. And on the 1st of September, at night, there was heavy rain. And when we took the sample the other day, we collected water sample, and it's kind of smelly, and we discovered that it has exceeded or the pollution level has exceeded the legal standards, but it's not serious. So we think that's just some remnant leachate. It's not a serious problem. Mr. Lo Weiqiao, for my first question, I would like to follow up on the issue of remnant leachate. That's why the water sample taken on the 2nd of September was problematic. And some of the remnant leachate may be still in the vicinity of Kongyou Channel. That's why this happened. If the holes have been mended and there's no more leakage, then I think the future samples would be free of problems. So after the 2nd of September, have you collected new samples? And when was that done? And if that's not done, when will you collect new samples? You have the analysis result, of course, we will be interested to know. And we want to know whether the remedies has already solved the problem. Also, I paid a site visit with Madam Chair and other members. We understood that these lagoons were temporary facilities. And the lagoon that had a leak was of a bigger size. And if there's any leakage, the leachate will infiltrate into the waste mass. You explained to us on that day that these lagoons would not overflow. And if there's any problem, the water from this lagoon would have to be pumped to other lagoons. And at that time, those lagoons were quite full because it was the rainy season. And if you if you had any problem during the pumping, then the leachate would be discharged into Kongyou Channel. So is that where the problem lies? And also for this temporary lagoons, well, you really need them during rainy seasons. So if you maintain the depth of such lagoons, can you make these lagoons smaller so that instead of one lagoon, you can have two lagoons? And when there is a problem, the impact won't be so huge. Well, for example, if the leachate lagoon is smaller, then less leachate will be leaked out. I think that would be a better arrangement. And also for the monitoring of groundwater, I think you have found that there was no problem with the groundwater because this is a major issue. If groundwater is contaminated, it will have a huge impact on the environment. So now, there's no problem, and there's no problem with the groundwater. So it means that the landfills are still functioning well. So for the whole sewage network, you are saying that you will make a, it will speed up its improvement. You have told us about some short-term measures and midterm measures, but how about long-term measures? Now, will you enlarge the sewage treatment? Or will you enlarge the onsite treatment plans? And also, will the Shetwu Hui Sewer Treatment Works be enhanced so that more leachate can be treated in a more efficient manner?
Mr. Chair. Our colleagues are watching the situation every day. At the opening near Kongyou Channel, if the water has any color, we will take samples. Now, you can look at the situation on the 9th of September. You can see that the water was clear. And we don't need to take water samples because the water is clean. It's clear. It's not smelly. As for the long-term improvement measures, my understanding is that they plan to increase vehicle washing. They will use more water. They have a plan to increase sewage treatment facilities. And in our follow-up work, we've already mentioned that. As for the drains, with the growth in population since 2009, the administration has decided to increase the sewage, the capacity of the sewers. From the landfill to Limahang Road, that part will be strengthened. And also in the villages, there will be a drain bringing sewage from the village to other places. This will help to reduce the amount of leachates that need to be treated in the landfill. Dr. Fernando Cheng.
Leakage of leachate into the area outside the landfill, that's a matter of serious concern. In paragraph 5, you told us that on the 2nd of September, the water sample was also exceeding the limit. Now, they occurred on the 27th of July, and you were told on the 28th of July. The leakage should have been dealt with within a few days. But why? After one month or so, and even after the completion of the repair, the water sample was still exceeding the limit.
the water sample was still exceeding the limit? You mentioned heavy rain, but we have heavy rain very frequently. A few days ago, we had heavy rain. Is there any leakage which you have not discovered? The leakage in twenty, on the twenty seventh of July is said to cause the exceedance on the second of September. And then I worry whether your remedial work is thorough enough or not. Now, you claim that during heavy rain, leachate may be brought to the ground surface and therefore contaminated water will be brought to Kung Yu River through the surface water system. But we have several heavy rains and it's more than a month from the incident and we still have the contamination. Can you explain that? Mr. Secretary.
Well, I say something first and then my colleague will supplement. We have been monitoring the situation. Now, although the recent sample on the second of July, second of September did exceed the limit, it was not a serious exceedance. And up to, since the second of July, we have not seen any further exceedance. Now, first, we can see that there was a leakage and then it was under control and now it has recovered. Mr. Chair, we brought members on a site visit and we explained to members why after the twenty seventh of July, there would still be contaminated water. It is because a lot of water has gone into the waste mass. And when we pump the water, the water into the lagoons, we have filled up the lagoons and also the leachate on the ground after heavy rain and that because of the breach. And then water brings the leachate into the river through the ground, surface water system. As for the July twenty-second incident, there are, there were remaining leachate on the ground. And therefore, heavy rain brought the remaining leachate into the river. But now, we have, we don't have this problem anymore because the lagoon has been repaired. Now, you say that the second of September exceedance was still part of the incident on the twenty seventh of July. That may be called the finale of the incident. But my concern is whether your storage capacity is adequate. Now, the, now you also mentioned that you need to drain, you need to pump away the leachate from the mass, from the waste mass, and you fill up other lagoons. And the lagoons are filled up and therefore, there is leachate seeping out on the ground surface. That's the problem of the quantity, of the capacity of the lagoons. The second question is whether there is any problem with your leachate management system. Now, you do it, and I can see smelly water, gray, dark gray water near the landfill. Unless you say I'm lying. I'm on the, I was on, I was on the ground. I saw dark water, smelly water, it was during heavy rain. So do you have a problem with this storage of your temporary storage? Will you provide adequate temporary storage to prevent overflowing of the leachate, causing contamination of surface water? You say you will enhance the facilities to deal with surface water. Will that address the question I raised? Thirty seconds, you only have thirty seconds left to answer the question. Yes. Concerning the damage of the temporary storage lagoon, it was an isolated incident. It hadn't happened before. As for the design and operation of the landfill, they have to comply with very strict rules to make sure that everything is okay. There are standards to follow. Mr. Chair, you have not addressed Mr. Cheng's question. I think other members are asking the same question. We have heavy rain all the time. You explained that because of heavy rain, the lagoons are filled up and therefore, there is overflowing and then leachate flow into the river. We have heavy rain from time to time. How can you deal with that? Mr. Long Khoong. I think they have very strange logic. Now, people can see that the water is dirty. You say you test it. Now, so when people see dirty water, you ask for a test. But you do a visual inspection. If you say it's okay, then you don't need any test. That is really strange. The visual inspection is just a kind of assistant, assistance to the test. We need, if people can see the water is dirty, you ask for a test. But when you see that the water is clean, you don't need any test. I don't agree, I can't agree with your logic. Now, there is a contract. The Far East Landfill Technology is Limited, it belongs to New World. Does it look after this landfill only? Now, when Donald Zhang was the C E, his brother, Zhang Yimpo was working for New World. Probably, it was no wonder that the landfill was given to a subsidiary of the New World. Were there ex-government officials working for the Far East Landfill Technologies Limited? Were there ex-government officials worked for Mr. Cheng and then came to deal with you? Mr. Long Khoong, whether you ask there are retired civil servants? Yes. Also, do you have any former colleagues working for this Far East company? Dr. Chen. Far East is not responsible for the management. In fact, that is a French company which is mainly responsible for the operation of the landfill. Far East has shareholding. I just want to explain that they do not do the operation. They are an investor. My question is not for you. I want to ask Mr. Chair. I just want to know whether there were any, there are any ex-colleagues, ex-colleagues working for the landfill management. Did you come across such persons? I am not responsible for the landfill contract and operation. I have not seen that. Well, I look into that myself. The next question. Well, when there is any leak, you pump, or rather, when there is a lot of leachate, you pump it into the lagoons. And if the lagoon is damaged, then it will leak. The lagoon, the temporary lagoon is not covered, other lagoons are not covered. And when there is any leakage, you pump the leachate somewhere else. And when everything is full, then the leachate becomes surface water and not underground water. So how are you going to deal with the situation? Will you improve the surface water discharge system? Or are you going to improve the leachate management system? Now, I just want to know how big was the rain that caused the incident according to your climatology or hydrology knowledge? Madam Chairman. Now, before the damage, Hong Kong had heavy rains. Similar heavy rains had occurred before, but there was no such problem in the past. This was the first incident. As for the design of the landfill in respect of handling heavy rain, I asked Dr. Chen to speak on that. Well, after I've been, after I went to that site, I knew it, I know it. A primary school student knows it. Now, now you tell us that we don't need to worry about the groundwater. You monitor ammonia and nitrogen. Now, will you, how are you going to deal with surface water? Will you build more lagoons? You still need money for expansion. How are you going to deal? If you can pump that to Set Wuhai, why can't you pump it to other places?
Well, maybe Dr. Chen can explain to you about the design. Your question is similar to that of Dr. Fernando Cheng. Due to the time constraints, maybe ask the government officials to explain to you more in conclusion. Mr. Chen Kala. I think the public officers cannot just rely on their visual inspection. And then they ask people to rest assured after a mere visual inspection. Actually, we are very worried about this. Before the summer break, we had a lot of discussions about the extension of landfills. And the government told us that after the summer break, they will come back to tell us what their future expansion plans for landfills will be. But this is worrying. Well, when you look at it from a technical point of view, maybe this is just a minor incident. If I give you a scale of one to ten, maybe you say that it's just zero upon something. And you would ask, you would tell us that, members, you don't have to be so worried. This is just a leakage. But when the public look at it, it's not a simple issue because you are now trying to extend the landfills. This is not just an isolated incident. Is there any problem with management? Is there any problem with the company Far East, the contractor? Yes, I know it's not one hundred percent under the New World Company. And technically, a French company is responsible, but it's responsible for the waste vehicles. So this is a matter of monitoring. And now you want to extend the landfills. Are these companies capable of better management? When I look at the paper, I am really concerned. Well, actually, farmers are getting water from there. Well, yes, you say that it's just a small number, but there are indeed farmers getting water from the channel. And you said that on that very day, the contractor immediately provided fresh water to one of the farmers. And on the other, and on the next day, another farmer was provided with fresh water. So farming in the vicinity may be affected. Can we know the scale? I hope the administration would know how the public looks at it. You tell us that, well, after visual inspection, it's okay and now the hose are mended. So you should not be so worried, I don't think. You can tell us that. And also, after the incident, now you have a division monitoring the landfills. So what's the communication between the contractor and that division? After the incident, we need to know the details. Well, we won't just settle this issue after reading a few pages of reports. We are very concerned about the safety of landfills, the future extension of landfills. And also, we now know that farmers are getting water from these areas. So we are even more concerned. So there are technical questions here. But there is a new perspective, that is, is there any conflict of interest when it comes to the contractors? Or have you done anything wrong in the notification system? Well, just change the name. Don't call it a river in Chinese. You can call it a ditch. Well, in the past, it was a river, but the S A L government was rich and then it lined the bottom of the river with concrete and now it becomes a ditch. Would like to thank Mr. Chen for his question. Yes, I understand the direction you are talking about. After the incident, the, well, actually, the E P D has two roles to play. One is a law enforcement agency and the other is contract manager. And there are multiple tiers of monitoring. It's not just about managing the relationship with the contractor, but there is also the role of law enforcement. As for visual inspection, our law enforcement units would do that. So when there's an incident, water sample will be collected. And according to the contracts, we also collect samples on a regular basis. So there are two mechanisms handling the issue. So even though there's no incidents, we would monitor the water quality and we would collect water sample on a regular basis. And of course, on many occasions, we will communicate with the contractor. And we will try to find out if there's a simpler ways to let the public understand the situation. Mr. Chair. Well, when Dr. Chen gave the presentation, he already explained about this. That is, outside the landfill, they have been collecting water samples constantly. First is to ensure that the groundwater is not contaminated and it's not just for this incident. So for Kung Yu channel, they would also collect water from the channel. And they would monitor the changes in the water quality. We need scientific data. But when we look at it from the law enforcement perspective, this time around, we are very concerned about leachate leakage. And this is something we can see with our eyes. So that's why we are relying on visual inspection. It's not that we are just monitoring the water quality by visual inspection. Dr. Chen. Now, for landfill management, of course, we attach a lot of importance to this incident. And we have asked the contractor to submit a detailed report to us by the end of this month. And they have to tell us why this incident happened and what kind of immediate remedies have they put in place and will there be long-term measures to improve the situation? Now, we do not want to guess how the holes were made. Well, maybe the rain was very heavy and the soil structure was loosened and the rocks were loosened, etc. But these are just guesses. So we need to wait for the report of the contractor. And we need to look at all the relevant technicalities. As for the design of future lagoons, a member suggested that maybe we should use more lagoons and maybe the lagoons should be covered. We have already talked to the contractor. We told, we told them that we hope that the future lagoons will be covered. And when the future lagoons are built, there should be double And when the future lagoons are built, there should be double polyethylene liners. Now, this is to reduce the risk of the lagoons being damaged. And for the freshwater drainage system, can that be improved? Well, well, we can have some interception devices. At the freshwater drainage system, and if is to, we find that the water is contaminated, then we can pump the contaminated water away. So engineering wise, we can make some improvement. Mr Ron Yut Ho. Madam Chair. Well, when we talked about the extension of landfills, there were a lot of arguments. And I find it quite strange that this kind of incident happened at this juncture. Actually, this is a P R crisis. Well, the government should be remedying the P R crisis immediately. But the government just told us how they manage wastewater and leakage, and what's the difference between the two management systems? Now, is there a transparent, efficient, and accurate notification and monitoring mechanism? Well, this happened in July, and still, and now we are in September, the government still doesn't know what's happening. They are waiting for the contractor to tell them what has happened. Well, I think Hong Kong people are really pathetic. Well, what's your mechanism? Do you just read newspapers, and you read from a newspaper that this happened? Is there a more scientific notification and monitoring system so that the public can rest assured? This is question number one. And question number two, we are concerned about all the landfills. We are not just concerned about Nent's landfills. We are even more concerned about Chang Kwan Ho landfill because it's closer to a residential area. And in paragraph nineteen, you say that in the past, there have been seven complaints cases about Sents, the Sents landfill. Well, I think these lagoons have been installed in all the landfills. And now you find a hole in the lagoon, and you don't know what, why there was this hole, and you have to wait for two to three months before you know how this hole was formed. So for the residents living near landfills, your answer today is not an answer. Now, if you live in Chang Kwan Ho, well, you will know what the residents are talking about. Well, the Institute of Engineers today urge you to conduct a thorough investigation into the incident, and maybe you should suspend the use of the lagoons now. And if you do not do that, how can you ensure that holes will not appear in all other lagoons? Now, maybe in two weeks or two months' time, we will find that there are actually holes in other lagoons. How can you reassure the public? I have asked three questions. I hope they can answer all my questions. Thank you, Mr Tang. You mentioned the chairman of the Institute of Engineers. Yes, we have read the newspapers, and we will communicate with him. Actually, I think after knowing, we have talked to him, and after knowing the whole incidents, now he's more assured. Well, landfills have existed in many countries for a very long time. Well, this is really an isolated incident. For those who are engineers or contractors, they would know about this. For temporary lagoons. They would look at various factors. For example, the soil in the surrounding areas, would they affect the stability of the lagoons, etc. So for the Nent landfill and land, and other landfills, there have been lagoons for a number of years. Well, can the secretary be more focused? Can he answer my three questions? First, do you have a systematic and scientific notification and monitoring mechanism so that you can discover a hole whenever there is one? And also, would this happen in Chang Kwan Ho? And thirdly, will you suspend the use of these temporary lagoons? Well, please don't tell me histories. Can you focus on this quest, three questions? Well, as for the third question, well, the answer is obvious, no. Mr Chair. Do you want me to repeat the first two questions? First, about the notification and monitoring mechanism. Do you have to rely on reading newspapers? Now, maybe I can answer Mr Tang's first question, that is about whether we have a scientific monitoring system. Yes, we do have such a system. Now, other than our contractors, we also have site staff at the landfills. Yes, we have ten staff members there. So we monitor the situation all the time. On the twenty seventh of July, our site staff were there. So when the contractor tried to remedy the problem, when the leakage was pumped into other lagoons, we were there. We also built soil bouncy. So you knew that immediately. Well, did you inform the public immediately? We didn't inform the public right away. Well, we were working immediately. Now, we also have to monitor the operation of the government. Now, whether it's scientific, as you asked just now, well, if this lagoon leak, actually, it's very easy to know because we have devices to monitor them. For example, if a lagoon is to hold 10,000 cubic meters, if you do not pump the leakage away, then there should be 10,000 cubic meters. So we are monitoring the situation very closely. These lagoons have been installed for a very long time, and nothing happened. So this is just an isolated incident. But Madam Chair, she has not answered my second question, that is about the seven complaints concerning Chang Kwan Ho. Now, today, we are focusing on one topic. So let's members ask their first round questions. And now some members would like to ask questions for the second round. And I will also leave some time for the government officials to answer the other unanswered questions.
Ms Alina Wong, thank you, Chairman. In the report, we were told that the temporary leakage lagoon was built on rather solid ground on top of the waste. But I read from newspaper reports that the temporary leakage lagoon, which leaked, was built on ways that had been deposited recently. Now, since the ways had not consolidate, has not consolidated, there might be further subsidence. As a result, the impermeable layer was torn. Now, you said that instead of one layer, you're considering two layers of impermeable liner. I think one layer is not, one layer is not safe. Now, in fact, it is not a tank. In fact, you just use soil and rocks to build a pool, and then you put and cover that with the impermeable liner. But the surface, the ground surface was not consolidated, and therefore, subsidence may occur, and that will turn the lagoon. So you need to talk to the operator on the design of the lagoon. And the second question is, you have, they have chosen a wrong place to build the lagoon. Is it the case? Who is answer the questions? Concerning the engineering aspect, the contractor is the expert. They, they have to consider the loading, the size of the lagoon, and also the materials to be used. The liner, the high-density polyethylene liner, they have to follow the guidelines. For example, the A S D N, D I N, and also tensile strength, so on and so forth. There is a requirement that it has to meet, it has to meet minimum tear resistance. They have to follow the D I N or A S T standard. And there is an independent consultant assessing the standard. The present incident was rare. We asked for a detailed report. Is it a problem with the liner? Is it because of the weakness at the bottom? Or is it because it is built not on solid ground? As to whether a double layer will solve the problem is something technical, and they will have to consider that. As for the location and the structure, they also have to consider that. And they have the expert knowledge, and we therefore need to consider their report. And if need be, we may get independent advice from a third-party consultant. Well, I'm rather worried. These temporary leakage lagoons are not built in a professional way. Do they just dig a hole in the ground and then put the leakage in? Can't there be specific guidelines requiring the lagoon to be built on solid ground? In fact, there are guidelines. Now, concerning the location and also the design of the lagoon, they have considered the engineering aspect. They have to do the sums. They have to make sure that the lagoon is strong enough. Say, for example, the lagoon is for 10,000 cubic meters, then it will not, it will be able to accommodate 10,000 cubic meters. It will not burst at 50,000 meters, cubic meters. We are looking for the reasons for the leak. Now, it has been repaired. It doesn't mean that the ground is not solid. In fact, they have do the calculation in terms of loading, that is, it is okay. We, in fact, is now operating, and we are confident that's okay. Well, we don't understand. Now, you say they've done the sums, and they are able to bear the tension and the loading. Finally, there was, there were two holes, half the size, half the size of a tire. So either the decision, the assessment of the engineer was wrong, or there were factors outside professional, outside the professional expectation. Was the estimate by the engineer not up to standard? Or was it something beyond your professional expectation? Now, if that is the second scenario, then we can expect that there may, or we may worry, we are worried that similar leakages will occur in other landfills. Now, when we conducted a site inspection, the administration told us that the report would be made known to the public, and would discuss the report with us. Now, they are not able to answer your question why there was a hole. We need to wait for the report. Mr Chen Heng Ban.
Thank you, Chairman. According to the department's paper in the past five years, there were twenty-two complaints of leakage. Half, more than half, were related to N T West. And one case, and finally, there was no prosecution. Even in one case, it was rather likely that it was a mistake by the operator. I just want to know whether the supervision is not adequate. We also read from newspaper reports that residents living near the Went landfill complained that there were incidents of leakage. I just want to confirm whether such allegations can be confirmed. One thing was mentioned by Mr Chen, he asked for more, taking more samples and publishing the results. Will the department do that? Mr Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. We received twenty-two complaints against all the landfills. For Went, there were twelve complaints. In looking into nine cases, there was no discharge of sewage from the landfill. In three cases, in another three cases, because of heavy rain, some surface water, some water with soil was seen. And we confirm that the water was carrying soil and mud, and it was not leakage. And in another case, it was found that after a heavy rain, some sewage has escaped, and they are concerned whether there is any leakage escaping. Our compliance section look into that. In that case, we intended to sue the contractor because of discharge of sewage. The contractor has provide, had provided evidence that all the lagoons was not leaking. The evidence shows that there was no leakage getting into the water system, and therefore, we withdraw, we withdrew the prosecution. And we received seven complaints from the Sents, or Chang Kwan Ho. Two cases was after heavy rain, and also in one case, near Fatong Chow in Chang Kwan Ho, near Chang Kwan Ho, some people saw some muddy water, and they suspected it was leakage from Chang Kwan Ho, but they are not related, were not related. In another case, in the nearby sea water, some mud was seen, and we found, we confirmed that the mud water, muddy water didn't come from the Sents landfill. Concerning Chang Kwan Ho, of the seven cases, none was substantiated. As for the Nent, we received three complaints. Two were unrelated. Two didn't involve any discharge of sewage, and the next, and the remaining one was, and the remaining one, we conducted inspection with Mr Fernando, Dr Fernando Zhang. It was claimed that the dirty water came from the Nent. But at that, on that day, we didn't see any water coming out from Nent. And the yellow water was the result of the presence of iron content in the river channel or in the natural environment. The colored water was not related to the Nent. Now, when you conduct inspection, did you do it just by visual inspection, or you did tests? First, we trace the source of the dirty water. If we can see dirty water discharged from the landfill, we will take samples, and then we see whether it's leakage or stormwater. Now, if we exclude visual inspection, we have, the Mr Chen and Mr, the two Mr Chens have asked you whether you will step up the collection of water samples in order to reduce people's worries. Will you do that? Dr Chen can answer your question.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Apart from dealing with groundwater, we also take samples from surface water. I say, we take water samples from Kong Yu Channel and Ping Yun River. Now, the Lake Ping. dots, two some, two stations from Kong Yu Channel. And I think we can step up the frequency. Mr. Chong. I've heard their explanation for a very long time. And we only know the problem after the incident. But this company is very experienced. Can the bureau or department tell us this? With regard to leakage or leakage, what are the causes, what are the major causes of leakage? And what are the measures to prevent this? And if there is any leakage, how can you speedily solve the problem? You're just sitting there and wait? Five counts, six counts of complaints? Now, would you use better methods, better materials to prevent any leakage? It seems that you're just feeling your way through. So it is not effective. If that is the case, anybody can do it. Give the contract to me when there is a leakage, then I'll tell you how I can solve the problem. Now, if you get an experienced company to do it, then the company should have told you how to deal with that. When the lagoon is filled up, it will overflow, and there is a leakage. When there is heavy rain, there is a hole in the liner, then there will be a leak. And, you know, the water, in heavy rain, will damage a lot of things. Any facility will have a problem. There should be a way to prevent that.
Well, the problem we are focusing on is the holes in one of the lagoons. We have three strategic landfills in Hong Kong. They have been operating for over a decade, and this is the first incident like this. This is rare. So the contractors have been operating very professionally. They have been adhering to standards. Well, this time around, unfortunately, that's an accident. So we are trying to optimize the system and the operation. So it's not like what you depicted. It seems that these people don't know how to do their job. It's not true. Well, there is a standard, and they are following the standard. But we are now just trying to optimize the approach. And also, we are trying to improve our communication with the public. Maybe my colleagues would like to supplement? Well, that's not what I said. Well, you say that there have been no leakages in the lagoons. But you should expect this kind of thing to happen. So if a leakage happens, how are you going to deal with the problem? Now, even though the measures are redundant, still, you need to have some contingency plans so as to prevent leakage. Yes, that's your view, and I understand that. And we will review the situation, and we will take a number of steps. First of all, we will liaise with the contractor, and we ask them to submit a report. Reports should be comprehensive and professional, so we have to wait for some time, and they're going to submit it by the end of September. If you tell us why it happened, and what contingency measures they had in place, and in the future, how can they prevent such incidents from recurring? And how can the safety coefficients be enhanced? And in case incident like this happens again, the consequence won't be serious. And also, we have two short-term measures and three midterm measures. We are going to increase the uptake of pretreated leakage by the current sewage system, so that there can be a buffer. We have heard members' voice. You want a better notification system. Yes, we've heard you. And also, we will check up the frequency of taking water samples. So we will enhance our efforts. At the present stage, can you tell members this? How do you discover the holes? You showed us a picture. Well, it was about the leakage level, so you could see it. But what if there is a large volume of leakage, and you cannot see the holes? So you were asked about this monitoring system. Well, in case the holes are beneath the water levels, then how can you detect that there are such holes? So for this lagoon, if it's not at this place, if the holes are not at this position, and if they are at other positions, how can you detect them? Can you tell us now, or do you have to wait for the end of September report? Dr. Chen.
Well, there are two aspects. First of all, if we do not thumb away the leakage, and if we discover the level of the leakage has lowered, and of course, that's a leakage. Well, sometimes, if it's very sunny, then there would be a certain level of evaporation. Well, this time around, we discovered some leakage in the periphery. But we still have to wait for the detailed report before we know the exact reason.
Mr. Chen Wang Chen. Well, for the temporary lagoons, people are very concerned about the cause of the leakage. We hope to see the report soon. And now, you're telling us the reports will be submitted by the end of September. We hope that measures, or preventive measures can be in place afterwards. Now, for the contractor, they have signed a design, build, and operate contract with the ADP. And I would like to ask questions about paragraphs four and five. For the contractor, well, how many eligible contractors do we have in the market? Do we have a lot of choices? If this contractor is not performing well, can we solve the problem by finding another one? So if the performance of the contractor is not satisfactory, what can be done? So how long will the contract be? When will it expire? Why do I ask this question? In paragraph five, it is said that legal action may be taken. So is this in accordance with the contract? Or is governed by some other legislation? If there is a breach on the part of the contractor, does the contractor have to be held responsible? And for paragraph four, it's about the sample and the analysis of the sample. Now, this can be addressed as an evidence. And as to the testing of leakage, there are a number of methods. Well, leakage may happen in other places beside the lagoon. So when it comes to analyzing the sample, can the process be sped up? Oh, this is one of the major factors for deciding whether there's a leakage, and we need to remedy as soon as possible. Now, it takes 23 days to do the analysis. Is it not too long? So Secretary, what's your view on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to the choice of contractors, Dr. Chen can answer this question. We are monitoring the contractors in two areas. First of all, we have Water Pollution Control Ordinance to monitor the discharge of sort of contract. Dr. Chen is monitoring that area. They will answer your questions. As for the analysis of water samples, after this incident, we have talked to the relevant laboratory. And now, they are speeding up the analysis. For the second of September analysis, the result was available within 10 days. So it's reduced from three weeks to 10 days already. We will optimize the system.
Mr. Chair. About law enforcement. Well, for the leakage discharge, if it exceeds the standards set out in the Water Pollution Control Ordinance, we can prosecute him. So it's not just about the contract. And we, this is a law enforcement action. As for analysis, we have to look at the biochemical oxygen demand. And we need to do it for five days before we can do the test. So it really takes time. But we have talked to the government's laboratory. For cases like this, they will try to speed up the whole process too, within 10 days. As for the contracts, maybe Dr. Chen can answer the question. Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Chen for his question. Well, as for the contract, it is a design, build, and operate contract. Well, for the benefits of this contract, the contractor would be responsible for the whole project. So it's not like one company doing the design and the other company doing the building. Because if we do that, then these two companies can pass it back to each other. So for this whole company is responsible for every part, and it has to shoulder the whole responsibility. So for the last decade or so, we have been adopting the DBO approach. And for the company Far East, well, it started operating the landfills in 1995. Its performance has been well. Other than complying with all our requirements, there are also other terms and conditions in the contracts that they have to follow. It's not just about environmental pollution. Now, they have never been proved to have polluted the environment. But there have been some minor penalties. For example, well, for the waste vehicles. Well, that's okay. I want to know how many eligible contractors there are in the market, and this question is not answered. And also, for the penalty, what's the most serious penalty? And can the experts work faster? Now, after collecting the sample, if a problem is discovered, then follow-up action can be taken immediately. So if the contractor may breach a certain ordinance, please tell us what ordinance that is, and what's the heaviest penalty is. And I also want to know the number of eligible contractors. Well, for companies that are specialized in waste management and landfills, there are not many companies like this in the world. So for the three strategic landfills in Hong Kong, the companies that are running them are quite experienced. I think we're also very concerned about the notification system. Maybe other members have asked this already, but I would like to follow up on this. How are you going to optimize the existing notification system so that the public can be informed immediately? And how about the communication mechanism between the contractor and the government? How can it be improved? Now, the EPT has asked the contractor to submit a report. And that report would include the cause of the incident, and what's preventive measures will there be, what kind of remedies can carried out, etc. So how will the government follow up? And if you are extending landfills in the future, how can you prevent this kind of incident from recurring? Now, this time around, that's not a huge impact. But in the future, if the management is not good, then other more serious incidents may happen. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. We have asked the contractor to submit a report to us. They would have to investigate the cause. And we would look carefully at this cause. We may have to hire professionals to give us views, and we may have to seek legal advice. And then we will decide as to whether the contractor would have to bear certain responsibilities. But under the law, they may also have other responsibilities. Some members asked about the penalty. According to the Water Pollution Control Ordinance, if a contractor is convicted for the first time, the fine can be as much as $200,000, and he may be subject to imprisonment of six months. And for the second time, the fine may be up to $400,000. So they have the legal responsibility to bear. As for our communication with the contractor, we are talking about two aspects. First of all, communications under the contract. Maybe Dr. Chen can supplement in this area. And secondly, under the law, the contractor has a license, and he has to work in accordance with the terms and conditions of the license. Now, if incidents like this happens, the contractor is required to inform our law enforcement division in 24 hours. It's different from informing the management, because we have two roles to play. So they need to keep a close liaison with us so that whenever anything happens, they have to inform us immediately. We have to find out whether they are legally responsible, and whether we need to collect evidence.
As for notifying the community, we know that members of public are concerned about it. We will consider how we can improve upon the notification arrangements for the community at large. As for the contract side, Dr. Chen will speak on that. Thank you for the questions. In terms of the contracts, several improvements can be made. We can enhance our monitoring. We have maintained good communication because we have a team of colleagues stationed on-site, including an engineer. This is not just for environmental monitoring. It's also about the covering of the ways, the operation of the vehicles. Now, the refuse collection vehicle will have to leave within 40 minutes after entering the site. There are many conditions, and if they don't observe the conditions, we will impose a fine on them. As for the net, in terms of environmental monitoring, there has been no breaches. But in terms of small things, say, not covering the waste well or turnaround time of refuse collection vehicles, the contractor was fined a small sum of money. As for the contractors, and for the landfills and also refuse transfer stations and wage management facilities, we conduct a pressos once every six months. We look at safety, manpower resources, and many other things. And if the grading is not good, then the contractor, the contractor's chance of getting another contract will be affected. If there is a new contract, and when the contractors put in a bit their track record or past performance, it's a matter of consideration. Now, concerning the consequences, such as penalizing the contractor, is just doing something off, or rather, locking the staple door after the horse is bolted. There is a need to enhance the monitoring and enhance the control so as to minimize the chance of getting into trouble. Members have, yes, Mr. Wu. Um, Chairman, my apologies, I'm late. And members may have asked these questions. I just want to make one point. Concerning Kong Yun, Kong Yu, uh, channel, it's just a nullah. It is soon be called a river. And no one, it is said that no one should draw water from the nullah for other, for any other purposes. But it said that during dry season, the supplier, the contractor will provide fresh water to one of the farmers. And after the incident, a farmer was informed or contacted and fresh water had been provided. That means farmers will draw water from Kong Yu channel for watering the plants. What is the basis for providing fresh water to the farmer by this, uh, by the contractor? Doctor Chen. All along, before the incident, Kong Yu Nullah, um, didn't, uh, have water when it was a dry season. But recently, but nearby, there is a Mister Cole, a farmer. Our contractor has a metal of goodwill, um, provide water to the farmer by tankers. This is for watering the plants. Uh, that has been done regularly over a long period of time. After this incident, we made such an arrangement. Now, there was rain in principle. When there was rain, there is water. When there is rain, there is water in the river channel. Um, he can draw water, but, uh, we ask him not to get water from the channel and we provide them with, provide water to him with it, with tankers. When, uh, during rainy season, we don't need to provide water, but this time we have to because the water is not su- may not be suitable for irrigation. And there are farmers using water for irrigation apart from this farmer. The village head of Chong Yun Ha, uh, also, uh, may also do this, but he has yet to start farming. In fact, we know the situation of farmers nearby. I just don't understand, Chairman. The generally, the government does not provide irrigation water to the farmers. If farmers want to get water, they may need to, uh, take a well or get water from the river. Now, in this, uh, service water system, farmers draw water. Uh, it seems that it's government's responsibility to provide water to the farmers. If there is not enough rainwater, I just find it strange. I can explain that further. Now, there are farmers nearby who said that many years ago, they could use the river water to do irrigation. But, but with the landfill, um, some natural water courses might have been intercepted and there were less rainwater available in the water channels. Uh, as a good neighbor, we provide the service of, uh, we will provide the water for irrigation in the dry season. And, um, this is something left over from history and we know who are the farmers who need the water for irrigation. Members have completed the first round of question, except one. Um, in the second round, there are five members. Six altogether. Two minutes each. I know, I expect that you will overrun. Uh, Fernando Chen. A quick point, on the twenty-seventh of July, this is not occurred. On the twenty-third of August, you had the, um, report, um, test report showing the exceedance and you only announced it on the twenty-eighth. Why you take, you took so long? If you had to wait for the report, why you announce it only on the twenty-eighth? You had the outcome on the twenty-third of August. Yes, I agree with you. We need to, uh, there is room to review the, um, notification mechanism. And we've established, um, an arrangement with the government chemists. They will speed up uh, the testing process. But in terms, in the, uh, in biological or physical or chemical terms, then they may, the sample may have to be put in the lab for a certain period of time before tests can be conducted. But we try to shorten the process. Now, after we've got the report, we conducted an analysis as to how we should release information. In the future, uh, we will try to, um, announce information as early as possible. We adopt a professional approach. We wanted to conduct an objective analysis before we made the announcement. We were not, uh, trying to dodge the issue. I agree with you that there is room for improvement. I think announcing as early as possible is very important. From the leachate, uh, uh, leakage incident to the, uh, exceedance, uh, there is a time gap. And if you can announce this earlier, people can do their preventive measures earlier. And the delayed impact, uh, and also the impacts can be reduced. Run it on. Many members tend to accept the administration's explanation. Um, the, um, it seems that the members are willing to accept, uh, the report made by the contractor three months after the incident. I can't accept that. Now, the contractor is asked to conduct an investigation on himself. He, if he has made a mistake, how can you make sure that his report can be acceptable? His report, uh, will, uh, why can't the administration conduct investigation on the contractors to see if he has made a mistake? Why you can sit there and just say that, uh, nothing, uh, just say in such a manner and that nothing has happened as if nothing has happened? I just don't understand why the administration or the officials have such an attitude. That occur at the end of July and, um, there was an exceedance report. At the end of August, we asked for a report by the end of September. Why didn't you inspect on them? If you know the project, uh, how to do a project, you know there are different approaches. The contractor has the responsibility to conduct a report, to make a report. And we, um, monitor the situation. And after we've had the report, uh, we will have an independent assessment by experts. That's not acceptable that even today, uh, the administration is not able to tell us what has happened. And we are told to wait for the report at the end of this month. Would there be another meeting then? I don't find that attitude acceptable. Why, before this meeting, you don't find out the reason for the problem? You just tell us to wait for the reply of the contractor. How can you have such an attitude? Well, in fact, our attitude is professional and positive. You cannot, uh, do it with haste. You cannot speculate. Uh, you have to, um, wait for the report, you have to do the analysis. Uh, we need to go through a process. If I may, uh, make use of your time. Why can't you maintain a good balance? Now, you should hold the contractor responsible. He has signed a contract with you, he is responsible, he has to conduct a, an investigation. But why can't the administration conduct an in- uh, investigation in parallel? Have you done anything to find out the reasons for the failure? I think, uh, there are contractual and legal consideration. We need to deal with it carefully. Um, we, we need, otherwise we'll be irresponsible. Now, if you say this is irresponsible, you have to give us your justification. Why, uh, how you come to the conclusion that conducting an investigation by the government is irresponsible? On the other hand, members find that you are irresponsible because you don't do investigation. You just let the contractor, uh, do the investigation. When the report is available, we'll certainly have a meeting to follow the matter up. This is Long Hong. The first is the right to know. The first point is the right to know. Now, if you announce, say, results, then people can exercise their right to know and people can monitor the government. People can also take measures to protect themselves. You just let the contractor to inform the farmer. Uh, but why don't you inform me and I inform the farmer? Or why don't you inform Apple Daily or SCMP and then let them inform the public? The second point is, uh, there will be a report by the contractor. And if you do a report as well, then there will be, uh, disputes just like, um, uh, medical, uh, cases. But you still need to conduct investigation because you are accountable to us. If you give us a report and if the contractor challenges your report and you lose the litigation, I still support you. Now, even if, uh, at the end of day, you have to conduct an in- investigation if we are not happy with the report of the contractor. Uh, you are the third party. Or rather, there is a third party. Now, in the, um, there will be an independent third party who is experienced, um, can, uh, which you can appoint to deal with the problem. Now, if the contractor does not, uh, do it, then you have to do it. Now, concerning the third party. Why can't the third party do something about it? Now, considering the lady who said that there was a sensor. Yes, that was the hardware. But what about the software? When there was a leakage, why didn't you make an announcement? If you had made an announcement, it wouldn't be, uh, become a serious problem. Uh, just like the Fukushima incident. The power company was saying something different from that, uh, from that of the government. I don't want to, um, uh, make any speculation. But, um, if you cannot do, if you fail to do your job, you have to be criticized. You need to set up the criteria for making notification. You need to look at outcome. You don't just look at input-output. You need to meet, um, the expectations. So you have two minutes, Mister Long. I just remind them that they have a certain, they have made a certain, uh, promise and they have to fulfill their promise.
Mister Long and Wong. Yes, we've been discussing for a long time and I hope the government will promise us three things. First of all, you have to carry out a serious investigation. Find out the truth about the leachate leakage. And the EPT should conduct its own inspection. You should not just wait for the contractor. And second, you should have to hold a certain party responsible for the incident. And also you should put forward effective improvement measures. Just now Mister Wu asked a question and we are also very worried about that. That is, um, the leachate has, uh, made its way into Kong Yu channel. On the seventh of August, what was the situation like? How much leachate was discharged into Kong Yu channel? Is it like dumping pig dungs into a river? And on the twenty-third and thirtieth of August, as well as the second of September, um, the water pollution level also exceeded the legal standards. And you said that the lining has now been fixed and but if that's the case, how come the, uh, water sample collected on the second of September also had a pollution level exceeding the legal standards? Is it suitable, um, for farmers to use it for irrigation? Ten seconds. Uh, we have a cross-border liaison with the mainland and we will carry out a serious investigation. We will improve the notification mechanism in order to reduce future risks. As for the recent, uh, pollution levels exceeding the legal standards, um, actually, the pollution level has been decreasing in the past, uh, ten days or so. The, um, problem has been less serious. Well, we know several facts. First of all, we know the water is polluted. And second, we know the source of pollution. This is a fact. We have been talking about this for a long time. We all know about that. And third, who's going to be, uh, who's responsible for managing the, um, leachate storage? We all know about that. So we know the source, we know who's responsible. So in accordance with the Water Pollution Control Ordinance, as the administration said just now, now you can consider, uh, taking legal action. But the government is waiting for the report. And then the government would have to ask someone to look at the reports. And then the government would, um, need to decide. Of course, CETA is a very big company. It has business all over the world. It has a lot of facilities. It has its international status. It has a lot of legal supports. But it's exactly because it's big, it has to shoulder, uh, the responsibility. I am not accusing you of evading the responsibility, but it seems that you have too much worries. So there are facts. Now, the water is polluted. So should the government consider prosecution? Instead of waiting for the reports and then asking experts to look at the reports and then we will hold another meeting here and it will be another six months? The public wants to see the government defending people's right to know and protecting the public's health. Secretary. Mister Chen, yes, you've made your point very clear. The government has the responsibility to enforce the law. So for our Environmental Compliance Division staff, they will do their job. And now we are waiting for the reports. This is something that's delineated under the contract. This is a reasonable step. So, uh, these two things are done at the same time. Mister Wu Chi Wei. I have two points to make. First of all, about the landfill design. Well, all the, uh, leachate should be contained. And even though there is a leakage, it should still be contained within the landfill area. So why is there an overflow and why is the leachate mixed with surface water? So I want to know the mechanism. And second, when you look at the photo, there are two triangular holes. If you look at them, it's not like a torn hole. So can it be a man-made damage? And for the design of the landfill. Even if there is a leachate leakage, um, at the lagoon, at least the leachate should be contained within the landfill cell. Well, I'm quite worried about the design. I'm worried that you do not have a mechanism, uh, to prevent, um, the leachate uh, from overflowing from the lagoon. Well, can the administration do this? Now, maybe, um, you should hold a meeting with Mister Wu Chi Wei and ask some officials to explain the whole system and mechanism to him. I think when we visited the site, you have already
I think when we visited the site, you have already provided us with some information. And Mr. Wu is also very concerned about the surface water. Now, the lagoons were overflowed and that's why the leakage was discharged into Kong Yu channel. So after discussing for two hours, we have not heard the government tell us how this can be prevented in the future. Should there be a cover? When, if there is a cover, then there would be no evaporation. So if it's sunny, the cover would prevent the leakage from evaporating. But if it rains heavily, it can prevent overflowing. By the end of September, you will get the contractor's report. And members have also asked a lot of questions today which remain unanswered. So can you give us the report together with the answers in the future? And I'm sure we will have an occasion to follow up on these. We still have four minutes. And Secretary, there are still a number of questions that are not answered. So please make use of these four minutes and make a summary. Maybe I try to do it. Yes, and the secretary? I will try to be succinct. Well, most of the members have this view. That is, they want us to have an immediate notification system. We accept that. Please give us some time to think about it. So if an accident happens, we would inform the public immediately and then we will tell the public what we will do and how we are going to remedy. I think we need some time to think about all these. But in principle, we do not object to this. And second, if we look forward, just now, we've talked about an immediate alerting system. And second, how we can reduce the risk? Some members have raised this point. That is, how can we reassure Hong Kong people? If you look at paragraphs ten and eleven of the paper, we have explained about some measures that are aiming to reduce risk. Now, there are two types of risks. First, tearing risks. That is infrastructural problems. And second, when it rains heavily, would there be flooding? So for paragraphs ten and eleven, they are actually talking about these problems. And the dry season is coming. So during the dry seasons, we will work more so as to reduce risks for the future. I think our colleagues have explained earlier. We have site staff at the landfills and whenever there's a leakage, we would know. The government will know this in a very short time. You criticize us for not informing the public immediately. Well, we will definitely try to improve on that. We will report to members later about that. As for the analysis of the samples, can the time be compressed? Yes, we will work on that. And in the future, we will report to members on the latest mechanism. I don't want members to have this impression. That is, now landfills are very dangerous and things may happen anytime. And second is, we don't know how to reduce the risk. Actually, we have highlighted this point in a paper. Thirdly, we have a new measure and in the near future, we will come back to members. And we will report to members on a new mechanism. A mechanism which is transparent and appropriate. Well, the government cannot evade because it wants to expand landfills and it has to come back to us for the issue of waste levy. But members think that you are not working fast enough. You can actually work in parallel with the contractor. Anyway, we will wrap up the meeting here and would like to thank all of you for attending.